Good evening, and we are going to call this Curriculum Evaluation Committee meeting on Monday, June 22, 2022, to order. It is 4:30, and we are, I'm sorry, it is actually 4:40, and we are in the Nashua North Boardroom. In attendance, we have Ms. Reagan-Lamphier.
Here.
Here. Mr. Neil Claffey.
Here.
And I am Jessica Brown. We have a quorum. We also have an attendance, Dr. Kim Siddharthi, and a few guests this evening. So our first item on the agenda is the elementary TLA lab sites.
Great. I'm really excited to talk about this tonight. So this really is a continuation of the professional development that we have been offering all year for our elementary teachers. A couple of meetings ago, we discussed having lab sites at our middle schools, and what we also want to do is be able to have lab sites in our elementary schools. It's really important for us to have vertical and horizontal alignment, especially when it comes to ELA. Our teachers have been loud and clear about the professional development needs, about their professional development needs. And so I am pleased to hand this over to our guest, Lynn Shady, and she is the CEO of TLA, Teaching and Learning Alliance. Go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you. Hello. It's really nice to be here. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to share with you a little bit about what we've been doing in Nashua for the last few weeks, visiting your schools, and what we've learned and how that is setting us up to do the work in the schools in the next, well, we hope, the next few years. Our partnerships with school districts are usually multi-year, but let's just start at the beginning. So in the last few weeks, we visited eight elementary schools, the schools that volunteered to be lab sites that are listed there. We also visited your three middle schools. I'm going to be talking about the elementary work today, but I just wanted you to know that these visits, which were only a few hours long at each elementary school, we wandered around and visited classrooms, watched what ELA instruction looked like in action. Sometimes it wasn't ELA time, so we watched whatever they were doing, if it was math or something else, but we saw a lot of reading and writing instruction. So approximately 10 classrooms in each of the eight schools. We met with focus groups of teachers, with one or two focus groups in each of the elementary schools. The same process was utilized at the middle school level. And we asked teachers questions about how they currently teach reading and writing, what they feel is working well, what they think could be better. We always ask them about the best professional development they've ever had in their career, since what we do is provide professional development, and we want to know what they've experienced in recent years that kind of rocked their world. And we also ask them what they want to learn, what they want to get better at. And we try to explain to them that our approach to professional development is to really customize it and shape it for each district and even for each school within each district, because the schools are not the same. And in order to do that, we have to get to know them. You actually can't do customized, personalized professional development if you don't first visit the school and see what teaching and learning looks like, see what the environments look like, see what children are doing, and get to know teachers. So this is what we did first. After this, we had an opportunity to sit with principals for a couple of hours and share with them what we learned, what we heard. We tried to do it in a really nonjudgmental way. We don't talk about specific buildings at all, but basically in the generic, you know, here are the things that we noticed, here's what we didn't see, here's what teachers told us. And after all of that, I'm not going to share all of that with you right now, that's another half an hour presentation that I won't make you sit through, but after all of that, we made some recommendations based on what we learned from visiting 80 classrooms and talking with 11 focus groups of elementary teachers. These are the things that we thought might be good entry points for the professional development that we will be doing in these eight buildings. So the first thing is that they're doing a comprehensive literacy model, a workshop model, and we thought, one thing we could focus on that is often what we do in our partner districts, is talk about how to make reading workshop, writing workshop, phonics, word study instruction, and interactive read aloud more robust, more rigorous, how to really do it better, right? That one thing is doing it, we're doing reading workshop, another thing is doing it well. And so we said to principals, you know, we saw what teachers are trying to do, we saw ways that we think we could help them make it better. So a principal could choose, and Kim was nice enough to say that principals could sort of choose the focus for the PD in their own buildings. So one option was pick one of these if you'd like to really zero in on that. Another way to think about it is to say, well, maybe we won't pick a component of literacy, maybe instead we'll pick a sort of pedagogical piece that works across different components. So if we look at mini lessons and say, you know what, we want to make our mini lessons short, explicit, and robust, which is kind of an expression we use at TLA to talk about the importance of being succinct, being very clear, and being rigorous, intellectually compelling and challenging for children. And that could work in reading, that could work in writing, it actually can work in math and in science as well. So some principals kind of latched on to this idea that if we talk about the pedagogy, how to really deliver these short, intense lessons, that teachers could then use it and carry it over to other content areas or other components of literacy. Another thing we talked about was conferring. In the literacy model, in the workshop model, an important part of that is when the students work independently and the teacher works one-to-one or with small groups. And so we watched what that looked like and said, you know, we could help teachers learn to do their one-to-one conferences in a more strategic way, how to be more diagnostic, how to do on-the-spot formative assessment, and how to use that data to teach children in the moment and to pull small groups that are more targeted. So this is another one of those through lines that you could pick conferring and then use it across different components of literacy. Another thing was this, you know, merging reading workshop with science of reading, which is a huge topic right now that I'm sure you're all aware of, trying to figure out how to stop thinking about these as opposites and mutually exclusive sets, but instead think of reading workshop and the science of reading as very compatible approaches to reading instruction where one kind of enhances the other. And then this last one here is, this is a big topic in the world of TLA. So we work in about 30 school districts per year, and in many of our partner districts, this notion of making thinking visible and how you help children express ideas well through talk and through writing is a large piece of what we do. And again, it works across content areas. We do a lot of this work in the secondary schools because it's not just an ELA thing. It works in content areas and in math as well. So we put this out there and said, we didn't see a lot of evidence of this, and we think it's something that would make your classrooms more intellectually compelling and would be interesting to teachers and would sort of transform the culture of schools, but you'll see in a minute when I show you what they selected. I guess I didn't sell it very well. They went with the more traditional components. And then we said, you know, these are your schools, you know your teachers, you know your students, you know what people need to make the school better, so if there's something else you'd like us to work on, put it out there. Like, again, this is a very co-constructed model of PD, and we wanted to share what we thought would be useful, but we were open to other suggestions. So this is kind of how we started, and this is what they really selected. Almost every school chose either making whole class mini lessons, short, explicit, and robust, or both and, merging reading workshop with science of reading. So those topics are going to be, you know, a major piece of the work that we're doing here in Nashua, and I think, you know, Kim, no surprise, right? I mean, that's kind of what you would have expected. When I looked at all of them, and this data is new because they just signed up in the last couple of weeks, these are the ones that were selected by these eight principals. We asked them to choose two focus areas. So we're not going to try to teach all of that in one year. You know, this is a kind of less is more approach. We'd rather go deep with something and learn it well than kind of, you know, smorgasbord all over the place. But across the eight schools, these were the topics that the principals selected as the focus for the PD. So let me just talk a little bit about what we mean by short, explicit, and robust, if I can. When I was visiting the schools, I took some pictures of anchor charts and environments, no pictures of people, but just of artifacts in the classroom. And this is typical anchor chart that we saw in a classroom where they're learning about biography, that's one of the genres that the students are studying in ELA. And you can see that the teacher has made an anchor chart that talks about what is biography, what are the characteristics of all biography, so on the always side, what you'd always see, and on the often side, what you see most of the time but not always. Typical genre study that focuses on what is the genre. What we want to move to is something more like this. So this is an anchor chart from another district that I saved them, I have thousands. And what they're doing is they're also studying biography, but the study is really about the thinking of the reader to make sense of the text, that what readers do when they read biography is they develop theories about how the subject of the biography's accomplishments change the world, and that that's what you do. You study their obstacles, their accomplishment, and the contribution, and in your brain while you read, you look at the facts, you look at the obstacles, you look at the major events and accomplishments, and you ask yourself, how did they achieve and what, how did it change the world? And ultimately, it helps us understand what this person's contribution was. So this is a sort of another level of depth in terms of teaching elementary children about the genre of biography. It's just more rigorous, it's clearer in terms of what the reader needs to do, and what you would see during the instruction is the teacher thinking aloud and modeling how you actually navigate that biography on Ann Sullivan. This is another one. This was a teacher I actually coached who was teaching third-grade children that when you read a biography, the most important thing you want to do is think about the decisions that the subject made and the important people in their life, and how the relationship they had with that person influenced who they ultimately became and what they did that made them worthy of a biography. Or we might even ask the question, who gets biographies written about them and who doesn't? I mean, how many of you have a biography written about you, and you're pretty important, right? And we're teaching this to young children. So again, what I want to emphasize to you is that we're not changing the whole curriculum. The teachers are going to use the same materials and use a lot of the same overall sort of units of study, but they're going to go deeper, and we're going to help them learn instructional moves that get kids to think in a more complicated way about what they're reading. This is what the PD will look like, and then I'm going to be quiet. In each of the eight elementary lab sites, we're going to do 10 days of customized professional development. It'll include workshops and demonstration lessons and in-the-moment coaching, which is what you see, the coach, who's somebody you know, Kim, on the right. She's coaching a teacher who is the one in purple sitting next to that child. So this is what it looks like. It's on the ground in the moment with the teachers in the classrooms. And then the lab teachers, the small cohort of early adopters who volunteer to work with us the first year, host an event called a hosted lab visit in the spring where they open their classrooms to colleagues, and that's what you're seeing in the lower picture. The other teachers are learning from their own colleague, which is what we want to do with the lab classrooms, to ultimately build capacity and sustainability for long-term improvement. So that's my talk, and do we have questions now, or what do we do?
All right. Do you have some questions? Go ahead, Ms. Lamphier.
I was just wondering what the lab classrooms would look like. Are those just like regular classrooms with a whole group of kids, like 20 students or whatever, and it's just the person's regular classroom and then you come in? How often would you be coming in? Is it 10 days per year?
Yeah, it's 10 days per year. It's like once a month.
So the person whose classroom it is should take that, take what you bring that one day and use it moving forward every day in the classroom?
Yeah, well, it's, our job is to kind of build the capacity within the school, so we're going to work with, usually with reading specialists, principals, other leaders in the school, and give them things to work on while we're not there. We're not like a school-based coach who's in your school like every day or something like that. We come in, we work with the lab teachers, we teach them some techniques, we give them some things to work on till we come back. And it's, you know, they're doing what they always do. They're teaching kids to read and write and think and talk. We're just giving them some moves to use to do it even better.
Okay, so it's not the classroom teachers, it's the reading specialists that are going to go from classroom to classroom? They will be getting this?
We'll be working with classroom teachers, and usually reading specialists accompany us. I mean, the way this, I'm not being vague to be vague, it's that we work it with each building depending on what resources they have and what makes sense. But typically, when we are in a school, like that top picture, Connie, the coach who's on the right, is coaching that teacher, but there are like seven teachers watching. So it's, you know what I mean? It doesn't make sense when you have outside consultants come in to do this kind of coaching to just have it be one-on-one. So we're in a classroom with a teacher, and that teacher's students, and that's the lab classroom. There's probably other lab teachers who are watching.
Okay.
And learning. And then what principals have already figured out, they wanted to know, like, so when can we get the other teachers in there? They don't want it to just be that small lab cohort. So the hosted lab visit is kind of a formal event to bring in the rest of the school to see it, but as you can imagine, it's done in a very carefully orchestrated way so the poor lab teacher doesn't freak out.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know more about what it was going to actually look like in the schools. Thanks.
Yeah. It looks like school. I mean, it looks very normal.
And if I can just add on to that, Reagan. So I actually participated in this as a teacher, as a coach, and then later on as an administrator. So when I was working as a coach, I saw this same individual, Connie, top right, I saw her working with a group of eighth-grade teachers. After a couple of months, I wanted to be involved in what they were doing because it was really relevant to my work with English learners. And then, you know, then we started working together with the coach. And then what happened was, we had other teachers who also wanted to be part of this, and then this just became part of the culture of the school. I will say that when TLA came to the elementary school where I was an administrator, that school, I mean, there were lots of factors, right? But we worked on TLA when it came to literacy, we worked with TLA, rather, when it came to literacy instruction, and we took a school that was designated as a Level 5, most underperforming school in the state of Massachusetts, all the way up to a Level 1, which is the highest performing, over the course of three years. And I definitely think that building teacher capacity, like what Lynn is talking about, and really cultivating teacher leaders, I really think that that's kind of what helped to get us there.
Thank you. Mr. Claffey, do you have anything to add?
All right. I guess then we are at a point where we can make a motion. I move to approve the contract with the Teaching and Learning Alliance for elementary lab sites in the amount of $171,600 paid for by the Esser and Title II funding.
I second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Shady.
Thank you. All righty, so next up, we have Amy Rich and James Guy, and they are going to talk about the new civics requirement.
So this is something that's going to come up in the fall when we need to redo the program of studies because it's a graduation requirement, but we wanted to make you guys aware of what the law is, you know, what we have been doing, and then what we're going to be doing going So I included just a little bit of the history of this because this is something that has been worked on by the state, you know, through different laws since 2016. But in 2016, they passed a law requiring a locally developed competency-based civics assessment, and then in 2020, actually right before the pandemic started, there was a workshop that I attended up at the Department of Ed, and they kind of gave us some guidance on developing those. So in the summer of 2020, North and South civics teachers worked together to develop these competency-based assessments that we've been giving, and then reporting these, the pass/fails, to the Department of Ed. So that's been happening. And then in 2021, the state passed an amendment to this same RSA that we, says that we now have to give every student in addition to the competency-based assessment, which is something that, you know, has very seamlessly worked into the classes. In addition to that, we need to also give the 128-question citizenship test, and the students need to score a 70% or better on it in order to graduate. The law takes place, or takes effect July 1, 2023, so the current sophomores and freshmen as well as future students will be affected by this law. The RSA allows for modifications for IEPs to be worked out by the teacher and the school. So this past year, some civics teachers gave the test as a pilot, and we've been collecting feedback from those teachers. They gave it in different ways, some broke it up and gave it sort of based on what they had just covered, some of them gave it all together, some of them gave it paper, some of them, some of them were working on giving it in terms of a Google form. I don't know if they ended up giving the whole test in a Google form, but they experimented with a bunch of different ways, and we're collecting feedback from those teachers. And then this summer, we're going to be working together, North and South teachers, to kind of develop a, you know, standard operating procedure around what are the best ways to administer this test. We're also working with Directors of Guidance on how to track this in X2 so that we can keep track of which students have passed the civics test, citizenship test. So then the plan going forward is next year to give it to the 10th graders and the 11th graders, and, you know, if you pass it, good. And then we'll have some kind of targeted interventions for students who don't pass it in civics or U.S. history, you know, moving forward, as we go forward, probably definitely give it in civics, and then when students are in U.S. history, give them another chance, and then when they're seniors, you know, work on that targeted intervention. There's also some room for the teachers within the class to do some targeted intervention with students too. But we want to give them multiple opportunities, which is, you know, allowed under the, under the law, to pass the test. Some of the challenges that we're anticipating is that the test doesn't totally align with our courses. One of the civics teachers actually went through the whole test and broke it down so that we could see where the different questions in the test align. So all those questions in the kind of chart above is what aligns with the high school civics class, and then underneath that is where some of the other questions are. So there's a handful from eighth grade U.S. history, there's a handful from 11th grade, it's one question that's economics, and then a handful of questions that are like elementary school, I would say, holidays and symbols is from what they would have learned in elementary Some of the other challenges that we're anticipating is that our civics class is only a quarter, so it's only 45 days long, and it's already pretty jammed with teaching, so now we're adding this extra testing to that. 128 questions is pretty daunting to students, and I think the teachers who gave that this year as all one thing definitely saw that. So we're going to look at ways to address that. This isn't really the kind of assessment that our students are used to taking. I think our students are much more used to constructive response and written answers and, you know, defend your thinking type things, but this is really all memorization, low-depth-of-knowledge questions. And something that I had sent for your packets was, it's actually published, here's the test, and here are all the answers. So it's all out there. And then we're going to need to figure out a plan for students who transfer in, either if they took civics at another school, or they transfer in, you know, really close to their senior year, we'll have to figure out how to deal with those students. I think that was it. Anything you want to add?
I think you covered it.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about the requirement?
Go ahead, Mr. Claffey.
So they can take it unlimited times?
Yeah. There really has not been a ton of guidance. I think there's a technical guidance that is coming from the state. I saw a draft copy of it from some other social studies teachers in the state, and it seems like it gives schools a lot of leeway in how we administer and set up the test.
Go ahead, Ms. Lamphier.
So since 66% of it is covered in the civics class, and since the civics class is already jam-packed, and then you're going to have to add testing, is there any chance that the civics class should be restructured and be longer, like a whole semester instead of a quarter? Is that something that you guys are considering?
I mean, we would love that, that would be amazing, but it would require more teachers to be able to offer that. You know, we had talked about that as an option, but it would really hamstring what we could offer for electives, which, you know, I think the electives are where so many kids find like their passions in behavioral sciences, or, you know, they're really into economics, they can take extra economics classes and law classes, and, you know, so we don't want to compromise the elective. So we'd need more teachers to be able to have it be a semester.
How is this going to be, like, sold to the kids? Are they going to be told this is the U.S. citizenship test? And I just feel, I'm just worried they're going to have so much pressure on them to pass this, especially kids who might have parents who come from other countries. I just feel like it's going to scare the heck out of them.
It will. There's really no way around it, unfortunately, and the way we roll it out, I think we just have to roll it out as a requirement in our syllabi at that point in time, in the syllabus. So I mean, it is really a tough thing to go ahead and tell some kids that they're going to have to go ahead and pass this to graduate high school, and a lot, some kids that are used to taking tests, like around with the SAT and, you know, things that align with that, might be a little better, but there will be a lot that are definitely going to feel some pressure.
Is there any way that you can break the test up so that you're, I know you said that there's some leeway, but like, so you could give them like, so it's not 128 questions all at once, like maybe half at a time?
That's something we're going to work on this summer. We have two days in August with the, some of the civics teachers from each school, and so that's what we're going to kind of work on, you know. Are we going to break it up? How are we going to break it up? What's going to be the best way to structure this for the kids?
Okay.
And on top of breaking it up, the real task is to be how to track it. So let's just say you have a kid that passed a portion of it freshman year, failed some of it sophomore year, passed another portion on junior year, and then what do they do senior year? Do they have to take all those, repeat all those questions? Can they just do one? Can they do some sort of recovery like we do now? And it's really, and being with the 45 days, it kind of takes away what we can do to push them to DOK4 as well, because all this test is pretty much DOK1 with the answers already published, so they can definitely like just memorize it and take it.
Okay. I just, I just feel like this has upped the stakes on the civics class so much that now it's probably more important to go with the civics class rather than the electives, which is unfortunate, but I mean, I hope that when you guys have your discussions that you can figure out a way to make it work.
Can I just add a follow-up about the conduct? Can you go back to the slide with the list of the questions and the, so the, we have 11th grade history. Some of those questions should have been answered in 90 seconds. Some of those questions should have been answered in 9th grade world history, questions about World War II. Now, teachers might not get to it or cover it, but it seems to me that looking at those specific questions, they were covered in, they should have been covered in world history. Maybe you have to go back to a few things they learned in 8th grade, you see, there's some there. There's nothing wrong with reviewing that, but, I mean, they only need a 70.
I actually was thinking the same. No, I actually was kind of, had the same thought when we were looking at this particular chart here. Has there been, not just looking at the civics curriculum, but going through those other subjects to prioritize specific lessons in world history, 8th grade, those different other, I'm sorry, American history? Are, are you looking at those curriculums also as like a cohesive unit as well, or specifically exclusively the civics curriculum? I think we're focusing on the civics first, just because it has the bulk of the questions, but I'm sure that we'll take a look at the 11th grade and then, you know, we'd love to, things are a little weird this year, but we usually do work pretty closely with the, the coach, the middle school social studies coach, so we'd really like to work with her on, you know, the 8th grade alignment there. And so hopefully, when we get back to meeting as steering committees, we can talk about that, you know, as a 7 through 12 type of a thing. So I have a couple of other questions for you. So you'll be administering this test, obviously, to the upperclassmen to make sure that they, as the, this year's freshmen and sophomores move up. Do you, do these freshmen, will they be taking it from here on out when they, during their freshman year sometime? So that if they can take it and knock it out, out of the way at the beginning, can they go ahead and take it, or do they only have to take it during physics? Or I'm sorry, civics? I think for uniformity's sake and the accounting piece, which is going to be a thing, you know, it's going to take some time to kind of make sure that we're getting all the kids, that the first shot that they're going to have at it is at the end of civics in 10th grade. And one of the reasons why we wanted to do that was because they're going to have, the information of the bulk of those questions is going to be the freshest in their, in their minds then. And then if they don't pass it in 10th grade, then have another chance in 11th grade in the classroom, because we also felt like the most comfortable place for the kids to take it would be in the classroom with their teacher versus, you know, like, let's have everybody come down to the cafeteria and we're all going to take this test together. So, you know, I think we want to try to have it classroom-based as much as possible so the kids are in a comfortable environment with people who know them. And then if they have, you know, in those two chances have not passed it, then in 12th grade, maybe leveraging some Saturday school to work on the kids who still haven't passed it. So a few other questions regarding that kind of the timing of the test. If you find that kids are getting to their 11th and 12th grade year and still haven't had it, could there possibly be something similar to like a SAT prep course offered during E Block when they're already in, in the classroom as opposed to a weekend where they could actually have an intensive study on both test-taking and, and this particular test?
That can be an option, and I also, the attendance for Saturday school has been very good, especially at South anyway, I'm not sure about North, but I'm sure it's been the same. So that could be an option as well, where they can get that extra help that they need there.
So, and then correct me if I'm wrong, Saturday school is typically focused on students who maybe are struggling a little bit on the regular five-day school week and maybe have some makeup credit courses. I'm wondering if there's a way to kind of streamline this process and actually take some pressure off of the teachers for students that maybe don't struggle with test-taking, or they don't struggle with memorization, and they don't struggle with those type of things, that we could offer more opportunities that are not weekend or evening-based while you're moving forward and planning? Because there might be some real, you might be able to check a lot of boxes earlier than you think by offering it to more kids who are just willing to do the study on their own. Has that been a consideration? I think at this point, we've been focusing, you know, primarily on the, what will be the 10th and 11th graders next year, because they're the ones that it'll affect the most. But I'm, you know, I think all those ideas sound really great as we move forward and have, you know, 12th graders and kind of look at how things go, you know, I think anything's on the table. I would like to see, for Dr. Sarfey, I would like to see kind of a follow-up on that in the fall, because I know you guys are going to be working on the social studies curriculum through the summer, and I know that 8th grade and middle school is working with the state with the new alignments. So I would like to see like kind of a follow-up roundup for where we get to that point about how administration of the test and all that kind of things for the timing. And my last question was actually about when students typically take their civics courses. Is it always during their 10th grade year? That is the majority of students. Sometimes they can't fit it in 10th grade, and so they end up taking it at a different time, but the majority of kids take it in 10th grade. And is there, like, so if a student were to take, I know there's some kids that take it during the summer and things like that, do they administer the test then, and does it transfer to the school? I don't think that the, like, if they did V-LAC civics or something like that, I don't think that they would do that in their, in that. So that would be part of, you know, our anticipated challenges of tracking down the kids that didn't take it at North. Or, you know, sometimes kids will skip civics and they want to take AP government like senior year or something. So, you know, we're definitely going to have some kids that we're going to need to catch up with, but trying to, you know, get the majority of them in as many kind of big chunks as possible through the actual civics class. Thank you very much. So in regards to that, do you need a motion?
Not yet. So that was just informational, but I do want to just acknowledge that, you know, this is a new requirement. And of course, like many things, we are given this mandate with little guidance, right? So I'm sure that Dr. Andre, when we are participating in the South Central Superintendent's groups, this will be part of our conversation, because there certainly are a lot of kinks to work out. And I hear what you're saying about if there are students who are prepared, you know, ahead of time, right? And they don't have to wait all the way to the end of their civics class. Why wouldn't we let that happen? And so, you know, again, this is definitely going to be a work in progress. We can report back to you in the fall. I would actually advocate for reporting back to you, if possible, more after the new year, like in 2023, just because I think we need some time to have some conversations so that we can, we can kind of work some of these details out.
Yep, that would be fine. We could do it after the new year so that we can, if you want to implement some of the things and see how it's going, and a little update that way, that would be great.
Great. I have a question.
All right, so the next thing is-
Hold on, hold on one second. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, before we move on, I just, I'm looking at this chart with the different units for the service class, and it's a 45-day class. How long is each unit? I mean, do you have like a week?
That depends on the unit, that depends on the class. I mean, you can have a unit that's a week, you can have a unit that's a month, you know, like it-
It just seems like this is important stuff for our kids to be learning, above and beyond even a citizenship test. I just would like to maybe see more of a focus on this kind of stuff. I hope that it's also covered in American history.
So if I can also just add something, so I think what Mr. Guy was touching on before is, again, this is, this is a mandate that was handed down to us, right? And what kids have to do in order to be successful is they just have to, literally, they have to memorize. That's not what we strive to do as a school district. We want to go deep, right, when it comes to our content. So I see that this looks very daunting. I know it's, there's a lot of questions, right? And there's, there's a lot of content to cover. But I think that, I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that we don't want to emphasize so much on the memorization, because kids are pretty good at that, and we can help them to be able to build that background knowledge and memorize some of these facts, but they also want to make sure that they reserve some of that time to go deep on the things that we think are really important. You know, some of these questions are really important, but do they really understand, or do they just know the answer because they've been studying with flashcards? It's very different. Is that accurate?
That's correct, yes.
So again, you know, I think that there's a lot to be worked out, but I am very appreciative that both Amy and James have, have really been thoughtful about this and trying to figure out, how can we still have some integrity when it comes to the course, but at the same time, how can we make sure that we're meeting this requirement?
So I think to Ms. Lampier's point, I think what she's kind of getting at here is, I think we're supportive of more time in civics, you can spend more meaningful instruction, and also meeting the requirements from the state. So I think it would also be something to consider as you're moving forward as a department to, maybe, maybe we're not talking about, we're talking two versions of civics, a quarter class and then also a semester class, where the students who really want to dive deeper could, maybe, I don't know, maybe it's a, you know, foundations versus honors, I don't know about that, or maybe rename it to something slightly different. So that might be worth a consideration next year when you're coming up with your course, your course structure, and you make the request for which courses you're going to teach. It might be worth it just to kind of actually reevaluate if there is a need. And I recognize it might minimize some of the students that are wanting to take those social studies electives, but it also, you might be able to get deeper into civics that might spin off into kind of elective-style class that way. So, I don't know, it might be worth some consideration. Is that what's a kind of your thinking?
Yeah, I'm sorry, guys. I, I know that not everyone is as interested in history and government as I am. I just like, it, I am a history major, and to see this, it hurts me.
I'm sorry. Any discussion about giving it to them in 11th grade during their U.S. history class after they've had a chance to see how the various branches interact and have asserted their powers, blah, blah, blah? I know that's less time to pass the test.
I mean, we have been, these discussions are in their infancy, but that is one thing that we talked about afterwards, like using it as like a recovery piece. You give them a shot in 10th grade if they don't, the guys that do, great, and you mark them somehow and track them. And then afterwards, you have that, another shot in U.S. history afterwards. And then another shot as a recovery piece as their seniors. So that's something that we did talk about. But like I said, this is definitely in its infancy, so we are trying to figure out exactly how to roll this out.
Thank you very much. All right, so I guess next we'll move on to the American history textbooks and world history textbooks.
Yes. So I did send out a form to all of the teachers and the curriculum leads at the high school level, and I, and I asked if they had some critical needs. And so James and Amy both told me that the textbooks that they were using right now for both American history and world history are extremely tattered, extremely antiquated, and I guess when it comes to the number of resources we have, the number is very limited. Mr. Claffey just lived that nightmare, so he knows.
Mr. Claffey's seen that one before.
I didn't teach that one. So they, they made a very compelling case for the purchase of new world history books and new American history books. And, you know, I, I know that they have a little blurb here that, that we presented in their, in our board packet. I certainly imagine that you might have some questions about why it is that we need these updated textbooks, and that's why they're staying here right now. But I certainly hope that you would consider this purchase, because I do think it's important for us to have updated materials. I do think it's important for us to, to make sure that our students are going to be well-prepared so that when they come to their civics class, right, they're going to, they're going to be able to retain all that content and do fine and be able to carry that knowledge into the real world. But James and Amy, I don't know if you want to add anything to this request?
As you can see by the example that I gave you, the, the books are pretty torn up. That one's from 2004. We actually looked to see if we can buy, and, you know, you being a history major know that a lot's happened since 2004, even happening right now. So that's a big issue that we're having. We can't buy those same books because they're just out of print, and, you know, they, they go out of print every couple of years. So, and then that's like a challenge that we have as well. In the spring of 2020, when we did go fully remote, we gave as many materials out to these kids as we could. A lot did not come back. So that's an issue we have as well. Right now, we're kind of beg, borrowing, stealing from each other. So they'll, like, I'll often get emails from my colleagues and say, hey, I need 15 books, does anybody have them? I need 10, I need two. And we're running around, we call it the beg, borrow, and steal approach. So that's really hard to go ahead and kind of, you know, oversee. The other thing is too, is that when you're a student and you're getting excited about a class, and you sit down in front of everybody and look at your teacher and get all excited, and like, okay, here comes your textbook, and you get that, that's hard for them to buy into a class. I mean, they don't really take you seriously, they don't take the school seriously. I mean, that's one thing I always say about like your classroom being clean and how kids will buy in more if you actually have a space that's workable that they want to learn in. It's the same when it comes to a textbook. So we were lucky enough to get new economics and civics textbooks a couple of years ago, I think, whenever that was. And right now, that's why we, we really need the world history and the U.S. history. I think, I talked to one U.S. history teacher and asked him what he thought about it, and he said he, I think Soviet Russia is still in one of his books. So that is, that's why we have the need, and this also serves as a baseline for us. We don't have any common materials between us and North, really. And this would be our common material that we can use as a baseline and make sure that we're all on the same page with.
And one of the things I want to point out is that that book, you said it's 2004, right? So that's one of the more updated books that they're using. The other books are from 1998.
That's when I was in high school. Maybe I was using it. Does anyone from the committee have any comments or questions about this? Was there a question about one of the books on the list?
Yeah, just the, in the packet, the way that it's written up, it looks kind of like we have a list of prices for the world history, and that's $33,705. And then in the second part, which is, should be American history, we actually have a list, again, of prices for modern world history. And so we don't actually have any prices listed for American history books.
So what we're looking at right now is, because I'm looking in the packet with you, the first quote, with the first cover page, says modern world history. And then you see, if you go all the way down to the total cost of the proposal, $76,76215. So that would be for North and South. Is that correct? Yes, North and South.
I, I think what ended up in the packet is missing some pages from the quotes that I had sent. So there's, there is one quote that's for, and I realize that the, I don't know if the publisher or the rep could only put one on the cover page, but there is a quote for South that includes both books, and then there's a quote for North that includes both books, and it seems like the quotes in the packet were missing some pages.
Okay, I apologize for that. I certainly can get those, I can get those to you all. But the total cost-
For each school is $75,962. And 15 cents.
As long as the total is right.
I apologize for that.
Thank you for that clarification. My other question is, modern world history, is that because it's like, when, does it start at a certain date and time? Yeah, our, our high school world studies course starts around the Enlightenment, and it picks up from the 7th grade course, which goes up to the Renaissance. Okay. All right, sounds good. Does anyone have any questions or want to make a motion?
I just, if you don't, so when we go to the, when this goes to the full board, if we could just have a breakdown of the U.S., because the full request is about 133, something like that, so we could just do a little math tonight, but so rough.
Yeah, so what I would say is, and I apologize, I'm not really sure how this happened, I think I just printed it from the internet, but let me just, so this math is correct. It's $152,724.30. I certainly can make sure, I will, I will make sure that you have that updated quote, but maybe we could say not to exceed $153,000.
That's fine, we can do, that seems reasonable.
So it's basically the same cost for both, for both schools, close?
Yeah. Yeah, it's the same, I mean, it's the same cost for both schools, and each book is the same cost. We're ordering the same amount of books, and the books are the same price. All right, so I move to approve the purchase of world history and American history textbooks as presented in the amount of, actually, I'm going to take out strike as, as presented. I'm going to say, recommend purchase world history and American history textbooks by Houghton Mifflin quotes in an amount not to exceed $153,000 paid for out of the ESAR funds. And I got a second from Mr. Claffey. All in favor? Aye? There you go, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know what happened.
That's fantastic.
It's assigned to somebody, right? I said it's already assigned to somebody?
It is, I'd steal it.
Last name?
Okay. Oh, I didn't know, they had a whole entourage. I thought they were, we had more people coming up.
We have one more.
All righty. And so next we have the Mount Prospect Academy.
Yes, we just wanted to provide an update of all of the many successes that we have enjoyed this year. It's been a great partnership. And I'll turn it over to Rick Phelps and Susan Beckett-Dore.
Hi, thank you guys for having us.
Oh, can you put your mic on?
Sorry. Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us. We're grateful to be here and to have the opportunity to, to share the, some of the successes that we were able to have within the school. I just want to give a quick, brief introduction about Mount Prospect Academy and a little bit of our history in terms of serving, you know, children and youth and families in the region, primarily doing a lot of in-home family work, and, you know, more recently branching out into working collaboratively with schools. And it was a wonderful opportunity, you know, seeing the, the, the passion that the district had to try to really help kids make sense of and, and sort of return back to, to school after like the COVID pandemic, knowing that there was also likely a lot of children even prior to that, you know, struggling with different levels of, you know, mental health, depression, anxiety, just based on all the, you know, the demands that today's, you know, life sort of brings. And although we got off to, you know, a fairly slow start to begin with, due to just trying to get a program, you know, going, I think got approved in like September, for us to get sort of more of our ducks in a row was more the November timeframe. And since November, I feel like we've really made a lot of positive impact in the school. And I'm going to turn it over to, to Rick Phelps, who will share some of those concrete examples with you guys.
And again, thanks for this opportunity to share this information. This PowerPoint is just a brief overview of the work that's been done in the district since, since we started this year. We have, so basically, we're providing screenings for anxiety, depression, and potential suicidality. And the goal of our program is to support students in really kind of catching up developmentally, based on the struggles with the pandemic. So we've, we've assessed 193 students so far since the beginning of the school year with a breakdown of the, of the, the schools on your right. It's interesting to note that about 90% of the referrals that we had were from the elementary schools, and the rest were from middle and Nashua North. So we, we've, we've clearly been founded in nine schools so far with the goal of next year increasing that opportunity in terms of the schools. The rest of the PowerPoint really talks a lot about this, some visuals from the students, there's some feedback from the schools themselves that we can look at. Yeah. So some of the services being utilized by the school, so we have individual counseling, group counseling, and teacher consults in all the schools that we're currently involved in. Some specific services, bicentennial, we did a trauma training for some of the bicentennial faculty around COVID and the impact that COVID has had on the brain and on, on development. And what, what struck me as I helped co-facilitate the training was the feedback that we received from faculty just about how some of them are struggling with dealing with the effects of, of the pandemic, as well as the developmental challenges that their students are exhibiting as well. In our Charlotte Ave School, there was, they, they were without a guidance counselor for the year. So our clinicians were doing classroom observations to assist with school making, the school making recommendations to meet students' needs. And the feedback from Charlotte in particular was that they were incredibly thankful just to have support folks in the school with all the challenges that they faced. We also facilitated a social, a safety and social media training for families. We, we co-facilitated with the guidance counselor at Birch Hill. That was widely, you know, accepted and, and positive feedback was provided there. Just some, again, some of the anecdotal information. They clearly liked our guidance counselor, Rianne, and, and at Fairgrounds. Teachers reported, you know, having the team make a huge difference with students with anxiety, the anxiety decreasing in class and using coping skills, and looking forward to the counselor. So we use, we have emotional expression groups, art groups, and the choose, we use the Choose Love curriculum, which obviously is incredibly important with some of the recent events that have occurred. And so, you know, it's, it comes down to the school counselors and the, and the teachers really, really being really positive about some of the support that's been provided. You could see just, you know, identify, one of the faculty identifying having a Title I school with 500 students and one school counselor and not a social worker, really helping the students that need a consistent person. I do want to point out that with the end of the school year, we actually met with the team today, and they're, they're going to be putting together some of the data in terms of, you know, what, what the kids identified initially as with anxiety, depression, and where they stood once the, kind of the exit assessments were done. And as Sue said, when we got in a little slow and then COVID hit and the remote learning was challenging, we've really found that the feedback that they've been receiving over the last couple of months has been like incredible, just thankful for having additional support in the schools, you know, having those people to check in with the kids. And what we're talking about for the upcoming year is doing a lot more of translating what they're doing individually and in groups into the classroom setting. So two of our councils were trained in the regulated classroom. There's a plan to use that, you know, more increasingly next year. And we have some ideas from, from a trauma-informed perspective on how to kind of increase the work that we're doing in the schools, not just, again, from a numbers perspective on, on increasing referrals, but again, translating a lot of what we're doing from a social and an emotional standpoint into the classroom setting. There's a lot of feedback that we've received about, from the teachers about, kind of, sorry, about, I'm having a hard time navigating this computer. It's a little different than mine. I, I'm better at talking than reading off a PowerPoint. Anyway, so, I mean, unfortunately, if I don't get to the visuals, there's a lot of, Sue will help me here. There's a lot of visuals that the kids put together from the arts group, from the emotional expression group, and the teachers were asking, they, the teachers really wanted to know, what are you guys doing in your sessions? What are you doing in your groups? And then how can we use that more effectively in, in the classroom setting? And so that's going to be a focus in the, in the upcoming year in terms of, you know, again, translating some of that material onto the, onto the floor and into, and into the school settings. So we're, we're hoping to increase, again, our engagement in more schools and increase the amount of work that we're doing to, to translate the information into the setting. But it, it has been a very, very exciting year with everything. I know it's been a challenging year for the district, and we're really looking forward to enhancing the service delivery and enhancing what we're doing in the upcoming year.
One thing I just want to recognize, if I may, is, you know, not only have, not only have these guys really stepped in to help our students, but they also have been ready, willing, and able to help the adults. A lot of adults have been feeling some anxiety. A lot of adults have suffered trauma as a result of the pandemic. And our friends here at Mount Prospect have really stepped in. In light of the recent tragedies in Texas, the first thing that Rich did was call me and say, how are you? What can we do? How can we support the teachers? So I just wanted to make sure that I noted that and just express how thankful we are.
Thank you very much. That's excellent. They have access for our teachers as well. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
So actually, so I had just a couple of questions. And I'm glad to hear that you're going to be doing some communication back with the teachers so they can apply what you've learned in the classrooms. And just out of curiosity, have, has there been any edits to student IEPs or identification of new IEPs related to these kind of services?
So from my understanding, there's been minimal, minimal changes. We've, so we, our folks are starting to be asked to come into IEP meetings or come into meetings, but they're, you know, we haven't bridged that in terms of, you know, worrying about scope of practice, what can we provide? And, and, but, but I know that the information that's been provided to the, to the teachers and to the administrators, I think, is slowly being used to determine needs and recommendations and next steps. But I don't know if there's been any specific IEP changes made based on, based on the services we're providing.
That, great. Well, thank you. That's really interesting. So actually, another something that's kind of interesting, and I guess this speaks to kind of people's preconceived notions about the need for mental health services. I even was surprised to see, we typically think of trauma situations for kids and teachers at more heavily concentrated at our Title I schools. I was actually surprised to see that your top school up there was Charlotte, which is not one of our Title I schools. And I, I just, I gotta, I just, I don't know. I guess this is more anecdotal, I just a comment. I was, I was surprised to see that, but I was also glad to hear that their counselor and their administration is very supportive of the programming that's going on. So.
Yeah, and I think that, again, trauma is pretty expansive. And we just, we try not to even use the word trauma. We just talk about stress and the impact that stress has on the body, the brain, and the behaviors. And I think a lot of the, the teachers just had a lot of questions in regards to understanding student behavior. And they were appreciative of the feedback that our counselors provided in regards to, you know, what they're doing. So it's, it's simply focused on, you know, understanding what stress looks like and understanding how to effectively manage it. And, you know, we're kind of, we're trying to connect the, you know, the, the students with the faculty. So if we're teaching students alternative ways of dealing with stress, we want to teach the faculty how to support that for the kids, but how to, how to use it themselves. And so it's really making, you know, the most with what you, with what you have, which is what we've started to do and really have been really hammering over the last couple of months, but it's the end of the school year. So now we're taking the opportunity to reflect on the year and what do we want to do, you know, enhancing what we've already laid the foundation for. So we're excited about that. And we've already started talking about, like, when teachers come in, the beginning of the school year, what can we do? What do we have access to, to start laying that foundation before school starts? Because we know the teachers are going to come back from the summer and there's going to be stress and there's going to be anxiety, but what that looks like. So we're already talking about how do we jump in quick as opposed to waiting for, you know, referrals to come in or waiting for, you know, for crisis or, or a problem to happen.
And I just have one more. Speaking kind of the summer, is there a transition for next school year? Will you follow up with some of the students that are on your course load, caseload right now, or?
That is a great question. In fact, that's been number one discussion. So we've kind of identified that any student referred over the last, the last 30 days will be kind of grandfathered in, and, and we won't have to go through that process. But I think one of the pieces we, that wasn't in the contract that we're looking at is how do you know when to close a case and how do you know when to open a case? Because what we've noticed with the influx of referrals is that if we don't have a way to close cases, we're going to have open cases, then we're going to have additional cases on, on top of that. So those are all outlined kind of bullet that we're looking at for the next year because teachers are already saying, so are you guys coming back? And if so, are you going to still be able to see these kids? And so, yeah, so we're having discussions actually about that right now.
Right. And we want to, like, they just did that second round of like post-assessment to be able to really compare, you know, where kids are now after having us and then making, right, those judgment calls. And, and trying to also, like, part of our role has also been filling some of the gaps of like the other systems, like wait, you know, wait for community mental health and things of that nature. So some kiddos, like, we've, we've hung on more in sort of like an individual capacity as well as in the group setting too, because we needed to play that role because there really wasn't movement. So I think it is just really trying to, to go through all those data points and to help us make good decisions on where to center efforts still where kids are more potentially at risk. And then accepting like new ones in the fall that,
Yeah.
you know, we may close because it's, it seems they excelled, you know, or in a really good place. Not to say that after the summer that might, you know, still be there, but to have a better systemic way of making informed decisions. So.
And Kim and I have talked about too, the other providers and really trying, we've tried to nail down what the other providers are doing. Because piggybacking on what Sue said, the other thing is scope of practice. So our folks are counselors, they're not therapists. They're, they're, again, promoting functional skill development and baseline. Whereas if a student goes beyond our needs, then they need to be identified. And I think what we're doing is trying to bridge that gap if there are wait lists or there are a lack of services available for some of those. And again, we're not even talking about a chunk of the middle school population or the high school population. These are just elementary for the most part. So those are things that, again, I think we're going to be working on for, looking at, for the upcoming year.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you for, what you do for our kids. We appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. That was really, glad we had that little update. So we have vocabularary, which is a fun word to say. For those of you at home that aren't looking at this, that's a flow with an F.
Oh, wow. We really did lose full connection here, didn't we? Thank you guys so much. So I, I am going to show a little bit of a sample here if I can get my, if I can get this internet connection back. Yeah. So one of the questions that teachers always have is how do we teach academic language, right? So everybody, every content teacher, I know, Mr. Claffey, you certainly had, you certainly had academic vocabulary for your content, right? I did as well as an ELA teacher. And then I had a short little stint as a math teacher, which was somewhat horrifying. And I will be honest, I'll tell you that I was introduced to vocabularary when I was a math teacher. I was teaching in Colorado, I was getting my doctorate, and I had never taught math before. And there was a lot of math vocabulary that I hadn't, that I had not been exposed to. So I had to learn some of these words. And this is a video that I played for my students. And I will tell you, it's very often that I play this little rap song in my brain every time I hear about the words mean, median, and mode. I know what these things are because I was able to get through fifth grade math, right? But very often, when I'm talking about these, these different terms, or even during, I'll, I'll say even during our contract negotiations, some of these terms came up and I was playing this rap song in my brain. So I'm going to give you a little, a little taste, but just know that vocabularary offers rap videos to teach students academic vocabulary in every single content area. In addition to just the vocabulary, they're also learning content. So let me give you a little example. So let me give you a little example. All right, well, our, our audio definitely needs some sort of an update here. I don't know what's going on. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's the website that I'm on or if it's the speakers. But they're really catchy tunes, and again, you know, these sort of rap songs kind of grip kids. I know that back in February, I engaged in some professional development in Lawrence, Mass, where I had an opportunity to actually teach students and then have my instruction, have somebody come and observe my instruction and give me feedback. And one of the things that I did was I found a video from vocabuary focused on figurative language. And we watched it, we watched it a couple of times, and then the kids kind of like grasped the lyrics. And then when they were being asked about different figurative language charms, they, they knew what the answers were because those songs are really, really catchy. Sorry that my media didn't, my, my, my audio didn't come through today, but, yeah, I don't know if anybody has any questions on this. So specifically, what we would like to be able to do is have student accounts in grades K through five. And then we want to be able to give access to the videos for all teachers. In addition to the videos, there are downloads, there are principles for, principles for students, but I think that actually playing the videos and, and hearing that sort of auditory component and also the visual component is what is the most beneficial for students.
So I absolutely love this. I think that's pretty much how I got through middle school, memorizing prepositional phrases and the planets, the distance from the sun. My very educated mother just served us nine pizza pies. So like, I'm a big fan. And there's a song, but I won't sing it for you all. So I think this is great, and, you know, it sticks in your head, and it's things that you can both remember and people want to, you know, it's kind of, can cause like a fun group atmosphere in classes, even though it's kind of cheesy. I think kids like it.
It's, it is a little bit cheesy, but it's kind of amazing when you see kids rapping about grammar. I mean, it's really, it's amazing.
So anybody have any other comments?
I have a question. So it says on the pricing, the quantity, it says 4,420 students. Is that for all the elementary students?
So for the student accounts, that would be for all of the elementary students. But we want to give all the teachers licenses so that they can play the videos. So the students would be able to have the accounts, they'd be able to engage in activities through, like, through this platform. But again, all of the teachers would have licenses to, to actually play the videos.
Okay, so is that included in, that's not included in the pricing?
It is included in the price.
Oh, okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Claffey?
Thank you. On the, just below the cost, the, under, where it says terms, so below the 16,000, the total, just below that where it says terms, it says this order is valid until April 8th. So is that a concern?
No, that's not a concern at all. We, we hear that a lot, that the quotes are expired, and then we give them a call and then they honor the quote. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about that.
Oh, yeah. Would this be the same price next year to update it?
So this would be for a full year, and then if we wanted to carry it on for another year, then we would have to pay the same price or whatever the increase is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. So if there's no more questions, I would move to approve the vocabuary subscription in the amount of $16,651.20 paid for by Esser Funds.
I'll second it.
All right. Seconded by Ms. Lampier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion passes at 5:55. So we are down just a couple more items here. The Miller Biology licenses.
Don't worry, we're almost done, I promise. So do this is going to be a heavy agenda.
Well, this time of year, you got to get all the licensing and funding and, so there's a lot here.
So again, when I reached out to the, the high schools, I heard back from our science teachers, and they expressed a great need to have this online component of the Miller Biology books that they're using. I think that what they're doing at the high school level is very similar to what James and Amy talked about earlier with social studies, in that they lost a lot of their resources unfortunately as a result of handing out textbooks in light of the, in light of the pandemic. A lot of the materials were lost, and a lot of them came back damaged unfortunately. They want to be able to have this digital curriculum, which aligns with the textbooks that they have, because this digital, this digital component, well, as you know, lots of the teachers at the secondary level, they're utilizing Google Classroom. And one of the reasons why they're doing it is because when students are out, they don't want students to have that interruption in their education, right? So being able to log into Google Classroom means that they can continue their work pretty seamlessly and not fall behind, which is something that we want. I, I will say that they actually asked for a six-year license, and that was not something that we would be able to entertain, because what we're seeking to do is bring this online license to our schools, and we're seeking to pay for the license with Esser Funds. And as you know, Esser only runs through 2024. So what we told them is that we would, we would come to you and we would ask if we could have a one-year license. And if the one-year license is being utilized and it's successful and the teachers really like it and the students are learning, then we would think about finding sources to be able to continue those licenses. If you would indulge me, I'd just like to play a little piece of this with the audio voice. Yeah, it's all the way up, though. That's the thing. Jimmy, what are we doing wrong? Is it me?
The audio on there is. That's what we have to do. That's what you're going to come down next year.
Here, let me, uh.
Oh, the YouTube volume's all the way up. All right, let's try it this way. Sorry. We're all full of technical difficulties today. Okay, well, that was a terrible demonstration, but what you might not have seen is that this online learning component offers three-dimensional learning. The, the visuals are actually amazing, and it almost feels. I don't know if anybody's ever been to Epcot, if you've ever ridden Soren, but basically when you're on that ride, it feels like you're traveling through different places in the world, and that it's, looking at these videos, it's kind of what it feels like. It feels like you're having, you know, close personal encounters with a crocodile, which is pretty amazing. And additionally, the online component allows students to delve into case studies and, and be able to interact with these videos and, and conduct experiments and things like that, kind of like what we saw with the Amplify presentation. But I will say that the graphics on this are very, very impressive. I think even more so than what we saw with Amplify.
I, I will say, I, that's what I was looking at, was it looked like the imagery was very high-definition, and that looked good even on this projector that's a few years old. So I think it, it sounds like a great program, and it does seem smart to make sure if we can use Esser Funds right now to kind of reconsider. My only question is, how, which, how do you intend to track the frequency of classroom utilization? I mean, is it just anecdotal? Are we going to actually see if they're really using it?
No, I think it's important to see if they're really using it. And that's the one thing, I do want to give a shout out to Jonathan Foster, our new data analyst. He's been invaluable. He really has. Even when I was thinking about how are we going to track students' performance on the civics requirement, Jonathan will be able to help us with all of that. But one of the things that he has done is he's, he has been able to gain access to all of our online, for all of our online programs and into our online platforms, and he's been able to track usage when it comes to students being able to interact with the sites. He'll be able to figure out, or he'll be able to extract data that lets us know, you know, how many times students are watching the videos. I think that's going to be really important, and I know that that's something that Dr. Andre and I talked about. We want to make sure that if we're spending these funds, it's for resources that people are actually utilizing.
Excellent. That was exactly the answer I wanted to hear. Anyone else have anything to add?
I have a question about the number of, the number, the quantity. It says 135. And there are only 135 students that take this biology class, or?
So not necessarily, but I, I think that what we were looking at right now between the two, well, actually, that's probably accurate, between the two high schools. I, I actually think that that's pretty accurate. So yes.
Okay. All right. So I move to approve the purchase of Miller Biology license for $10,875 to be paid for by Esser Funding.
Second.
A second from Ms. Lampier. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And our final item for this evening, the iXL Math Screener.
Yes. So in the spirit of making sure that we have resources that we are really utilizing, I put our math coach, poor Krista Burrell, through the wringer with this. So Krista Burrell and I believe it was the middle school principals, they came to me and they asked for the subscription for this universal screener for math. And one of the questions that I asked them was, you know, why do we need this when we have Zern as an online component and as an addition to our math curriculum, which our core math curriculum is Eureka? And what they did was, they explained to me that this universal screener is, it's a quick 20-minute adaptive assessment tool that provides teachers with real-time information about where students are at, which grade level standards they have not yet mastered, and it allows teachers to figure out exactly what they need to do to be able to offer some tier-two intervention. And so, again, through multiple conversations, they did convince me that this universal screener was going to be beneficial to our students at the, at the middle school. But again, one of the things that we discussed was, if they are utilizing it, we want to, we want to have it for one year, see how it works, see how the students like it, see how the teachers like it, and whether or not they're actually using this data to, to drive instruction. I know the other day when I had a conversation with Dr. Andre and with the Department of Justice, they asked us about assessment data and how we're using assessment data. And certainly at the district level, you know, we're looking at, our view is very different than what teachers are using every single day. And so what, what Krista was telling me, what Mr. Falsrano, Mr. Poska were telling me is like, listen, this is real-time data. We can use it, it's super quick, and then we can move on. And so I, I actually, I actually am an advocate of this now, after learning a lot more about it, and I'm excited to see kind of what this data yields and then how we're going to be able to use it.
Any comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Claffey?
Same question about the, how long the estimate's valid. So it says this, this is, the 11,000 is valid until June 15th. No worries?
I'm not worried. I'm not worried. I'm pretty, I'm pretty persuasive sometimes.
I just thought maybe when this goes to the full board, if, if other people would raise that concern and...
I, I guess, and, and so...
Could change the, the deadline for us.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sure they could, and I certainly can inquire about that. I will just say that most of our estimates, you know, have a deadline, and like most school districts, our operating funds, if we were using operating funds, would not be released until after July 1. But if you notice, all of the quotes expire before July 1. It's what we dealt with last year. But yeah, now I'll see if we can get updated quotes.
Thank you. And so this is similar, I do think that it sounds like it's a pretty good, a good program because you can see this teacher has access to the student data and then the classroom as a whole, like, they can look at it immediately as opposed to something like iReady. Don't we have to usually wait for those results?
Yeah, these are immediate results.
So that sounds, I mean, that does sound really good, so you can kind of meet kids where they're at, particularly in math. If you've, if you've seen the entire classroom is having a problem with their multiplication tables, even though they're in eighth grade, you know you have to go back and do a little bit of background.
Absolutely.
All right. All right. Anybody, anything else?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
So I wanted to ask again about the number of tests, because it says on the description, it says grades K through eight, 2,200 students. Does that mean they can only give the test 2,200 times?
No, it doesn't mean that. Just that, it just means that only 2,200 students would have access to this, to this screener. But I will tell you that we plan on using this screener primarily for the middle school level.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I know that some of the classes were doing it in the last month because my daughter was doing this at the middle school level, so. I can confirm that it's happening.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the things that I did want to say too, is that the teachers did try it out, they did pilot, and that's when they brought it to Central Office.
All right.
I'm just, I'm asking the questions more for me to understand than anything else, so thank you.
No, I understand. That's, that's why we're here.
All right, so I actually don't have, does anybody else make the motion? Because I don't have the number in front of me.
Oh, boy. It's 11,000 even.
It's 11,000 even? And it's also out of Esser, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I move to approve the iXL Math Screener license in the amount of $11,000 to be paid for out of Esser Funding.
Second.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Claffey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So is there anything else that you'd like to bring before us tonight?
No, just if you see in that informational part, well, actually, two things. One, so Dr. Andre and I have been in communication, obviously, you have an email here from him. We, we met, I would say maybe an hour and a half last week, and we met for probably the same time the week before. We went through every single one of these items. He asked some tough questions, which I appreciated, and obviously, he did express his support for all of these items, which we're very grateful for. And then the other piece is the informational piece here. So all of these, all of these vendors or, you know, programs that you see here, these are all things that we already have in place. We're going to continue them, and so this really is just informational. And most of these are certainly content-specific, like EdPuzzle is specific to world language, formative, you know, Zern, ANET, Eureka, all of that is math.
I'm really glad to have that kind of support. I just out of curiosity, since this is kind of the year that we reevaluate our licenses, are there any programs that we decided we weren't using that we took out?
Absolutely, yeah. Yes, we did. Again, you know, we have a lot of resources here, and I think that's, I think that's definitely going to be a priority for Dr. Andre as well. We have a lot of resources here, but we want to make sure that what we have is actually driving student achievement. That's our goal.
Thank you very much. Any more comments or questions to the committee? All right, I'll take a motion.
To adjourn.
Yes.
Second?
Seconded by, motion by Mr. Claffey, seconded by Ms. Lampier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned at 6:09.